Give me, um... And one lead pilgrim. Good morning and welcome to the December 1st meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. This morning it is truly a ceremonial meeting and we will, it will be quick. I hope we have a lot of people here, a lot of citizens who have joined us. We're happy to see all of you. Some are in the back room, the overflow room. Hopefully there'll be some sandwiches left whenever we finish. We'll start this morning with invitation by Commissioner Marshall Fairclough.
Let's all rise please for the invocation and we remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together in this place. We thank you for the opportunity to do the business of our citizens. We ask, Lord, your blessing on each person here. We ask that each Commissioner deliberate with all due truth and honor and do the best that we possibly can in all cases for our citizens. We ask that you be with the family of our assistant county Rob, Assistant County Attorney Rob Hasty, whose father passed away this weekend. And in these things, in your name we ask. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I hesitate to try to recognize all of the elected officials. Don't know whether or not you can get up or not, but if you are elected, raise your hand please. Secretary Elaine Marshall is standing. Thank you. Senator Stan, who are the, we've got the school board, we've got several former commissioners. Would you please stand? Former commissioners. Where is Virginia Thompson? Where is she? There she is, back there. All right. And we have, Marshall said you were standing, Virginia, I couldn't see you. But, and we have former, we've got former manager James Martin and former deputy manager one lead pilgrim. And don't think I've forgotten anybody, I hope I haven't. Board Chair Greg West with most of his board and his executive staff are here this morning. Thank you so much. One of the big things that we did this year was to pass that formula. I consider that an achievement for this board. Let me go down first and bring down two former commissioners. Before I do that, did I forget somebody? Before I do that, I don't have formal remarks this morning. I think this morning goes to the newly elected commissioners as well as outgoing commissioners. All I want to say is thank you so much for citizens for allowing me to serve. And I want to thank each and every one of you who has served with me. It has been a challenging year, one that had many opportunities for prayer. Because counties are experiencing difficulties and there are situations that come up every day. There's not a day that occurs, that there's not something that we need to study or re-study or rethink. So it has been challenging. Thank you for working with me and supporting me during this year. Thank you to staff. And each and every one of you has performed above and beyond. If we had had twice as many staff people, they would have been too busy. But thank you so much. And now, as my last official duty, I'm gonna go down. And I ask Commissioner Ed Melvin to join me please. Everybody knows I have a tendency to be long-winded, so I'm scripted, okay? Commissioner Ed Melvin was first elected to this board in 1996 and he served until late 2000, the year 2000. He was appointed again to serve in 2003 and then re-elected in 2004, 2006, and 2010. He welcomed me to the board. He was my chair whenever I came to the Board of Commissioners. He was there the night that I was elected or afternoon or whatever, in that back room, right back there. And he set the pace for me. He called every week to find out whether or not there was anything going on. He always said, "What's going on?" I'm not sure he wanted to know sometimes what I told him, but he always asked what's going on. He loves Cumberland County. He knows Cumberland County. He knows your cousins, the cousins of your cousins, their nephews, who they married and probably who they live beside. He knows Cumberland County. He's served on the Cape Fear Valley Board of Trustees with me. He's served as a sheriff's liaison. He's served as the liaison to the Fire Chiefs Association, Need Carolina Council of Governments, Board of Directors, Civic Center Commission, Mental Health Board, and he's presently serving on the Social Services Board. He has a thorough knowledge of this board, a more thorough knowledge of this county. He knows how county government relates to the state and so for that, we are grateful. He's going to leave a void that one of these two guys is gonna fill quick, fast, and in a hurry. But he is constantly at community events. He goes to more community events than the event holders do. He is there before everybody and he speaks to everybody and stays late. He shows that he cares about our citizens and we are grateful for his service. And now I present to him this plaque. It says, "Presented to," you know who you are. Edred G. Melvin, "In recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County as a member of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, December 2nd, 1996 to December 6th, 2000, June 2nd, 2003 to December 6th, 2004, December 4th, 2006." I got it wrong. I did something wrong. Ed, you know you served, don't you? "To December 1st, 2014, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, December 1st, 2014." I think I'm more nervous than you are. Congratulations for your service. Thank you so much and best wishes.
Let me just say, it has been a great honor and a privilege to serve this great county of Cumberland. I wanna say a few thank yous this morning, but first, I want, first, thank you I want to thank is my Lord and Savior. She gave me a handkerchief.
I did.
In case I needed it.
It's new. It's new.
I asked her if it's been used before. But anyway, I'm gonna thank my wife Julie, my children Pat and Michelle. I'm gonna thank the Board of Commissioners, each and every one of you, for the great outstanding years that I've been able to serve with these ladies and gentlemen. After all these years, I feel like that, that we have the best Board of Commissioners in this whole entire state. Then I wanna thank our past Board members, Lee, Tal, several of you here. Thank you so much. I wanna thank our Commissioner-Secretary Candace, thank you, and Kelly. I wanna thank Amy Cullen, our new county manager. I'm telling you, didn't we do a good job when we picked the best county manager in the state?
Yeah, we did.
Or in this country as far as I'm concerned. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. And I want to thank each one of the department heads and the employees. This is, this is, it's just been a pleasure working with all these people. And all my friends that are here today, thank you so much for allowing me to serve and be the servant for each one of you. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you so much.
Commissioner King. Commissioner Billy R. King, whom we all finally know as B.R., is the longest-serving member of our board, 24 consecutive years. He has an institutional knowledge of Cumberland County and has accumulated right at a quarter century of experience in county government. Not only has he done that, he's served on numerous boards and committees of all kinds. Cape Fear Valley, you heard a list of them that you serve on, the Social Services Board, the Board of Health Joint Planning Board, and many others. But on top of that, he has served as a past president of the State Association of County Commissioners. And he's served with dignity, with honor, and with pride. All of the people get to know B.R. King. And before they even speak to me, when I go to the meetings, they wanna know where is B.R.? How's B.R.? He knows everybody across the state and he has gleaned ideas that have been helpful to us. He also served on the NACO Board, which is the National Board of County Commissioners, on the Board of Directors for the NACO Board. He is, I'm proud to say that I helped to recruit him to Cumberland County. I was Chair-President of District 10 of the North Carolina Association of Educators and we needed a field representative. Lo and behold, who came out on top, but B.R. King. We both were about 50 pounds lighter. Had black hair, yeah. We had black hair and we were young and enthusiastic and little did I know then, that we would both end up as county commissioners. You don't know what the good Lord has in store for you. Billy, though he served on the board for the longest time, he had the record, he held the record for brevity. I remember one time I was getting ready to nominate somebody, I said, "I would like to nominate, let's say Sam Smith." B.R. said, "All right, next, anybody else?" I didn't get a chance to say how good he was or anything. B.R. cut me right on off. He gets down to the business, he cuts to the chase, gets to the bottom line. He is known for his ability to instantly recall facts and figures that will be imperative for us to make a decision on a particular issue. And one of his, I don't know, he has this presence with him always, that no matter what, he says, "It's going to be all right. It will be all right." And so whenever I really wanted to know what he thought, I would say, "B.R., don't give me that. I need some definites." He said, "Haven't you learned now that everything works out, it's going to be all right." So he was just a constant, he was just a constant presence for me. B.R., you told me not to say all this. I couldn't help it. I couldn't help it. We served together in the same district for all these years. So I'm so sorry. You shouldn't be so old. All right, I'm through, B.R. Okay. You get the same plaque, okay? It says, "Presented to Commissioner Billy R. King in recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County as a member of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, December 3rd, 1990 to December 1st, 2014." And it's from us, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Congratulations.
Let me first recognize my wife who has tolerated my activities within the county commissioners for the past 24 years, Margaret. We've been together 40 years. We've been together 40 of those 24 years as my wife, so I'm very pleased with that. To my great surprise this morning, coming here from Wilson County, where I hail from, the great county of Wilson, is my sister, Bessie. Bessie, please stand. And Bessie's daughter Stephanie, who's out at Fort Bragg, Stephanie Wavyan. I was asked to say a few words today. I'm not campaigning right now, so I guess it's dangerous to ask a politician to say a few words. But I gotta say just a very few. I've had some great, great times being involved with the County Commissioners Organization and being involved here locally. I have truly enjoyed my experience. And in trying to put together some thoughts that I would just share with commissioners and wannabe commissioners down the road, one of the first things that come to mind to me as a commissioner, you've gotta keep your word. The very first thing I would just say is, whatever is expected of you, whatever you pledged to do, you gotta try to do that. The second point is, don't commit too early. If a new idea comes along, don't be the first one to jump on the wagon. Let's see where it's gonna go before you decide it, that's the one you wanna do. The other one is, make sure you understand. Sometimes things are complicated and very confusing and we need to make sure we understand. The other point, I'm criticized sometimes, is I believe in having a little wiggle room. Always give yourself a out in case you wanna wiggle just a little bit. The next thing is, do what you think is best for the county. Always, I believe that we as elected officials, we gotta do what in our hearts is best for the county and that's important to me. Commissioner Council mentioned a thing that I oftentimes say, and it's true, I say, "Everything is gonna be okay. Everything is gonna be all right." And it generally is. And generally what happens in a year or two, you look back and think about it and you laugh. The crisis that you have right now, you look back and you think about it and you see it wasn't that bad. And you know, Ronald Reagan, even though he was a Republican, he used to say, he had a point, he said, "Trust but verify." Trust but verify. You gotta, you gotta check it out real close. And this is near and dear to me, has always will and always will continue to be. Education must always be a priority, or the superintendent. I thought so, there he goes. Good to see you. But education must always be a priority, always, always. And we as elected officials, we must remember how we got there. We can't never forget how we got there. And you know, government can't do everything, but government can't do everything, but it can, it can help. Government can clearly help. We as elected officials here in Cumberland County serve some of the greatest people in North Carolina and in this country. We have some outstanding citizens here in Cumberland County. And in good times, in times of crises, the citizens of this community will rise to the occasion and do what is best for the community. I wanna just say one word about our staff. We've got some outstanding staff members here and Ed may mention of it, he may mention of it. From the first floor, the ground floor, to the fifth floor, we have outstanding staff members here in Cumberland County. And you know, I believe sincerely that we- And, you know, I believe sincerely that we must take care of our staff. And if we take care of them, they will take care of us as elected officials. Let us not forget that. Finally, in the words of the great country western philosopher Kenny Rogers. You've got to know when to hold them. You've got to know when to fold them. And you've got to know when to walk away. It's been real. Thank you very much.
I see others who have come in after I have recognized everyone. The only other person, I forgot to thank my husband when I thanked everybody, too. Everybody knows, he has to put up with a lot. But he is, has been with me through these days, and he has heard some comments that he did not understand. But now I'd like to recognize one of our senators. I see Senator Clark is here, too. I'd like to recognize Senator Meredith for a special presentation.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for being here. I know this is a very special occasion. I also want to thank all the elected officials currently and past members that have been elected. I know it's an honor to serve this community, and we are all ambassadors during our elected tenure and after we leave elected office. And I want to thank y'all for the sacrifice that y'all make each day and the one that you continue to make, because when you volunteer for public office, you don't only put yourself out there, but you put your whole family out there. And sometimes it's hard, but in the end, as Commissioner King will say, everything will work out. So I want to thank y'all initially for everything that y'all do, everything that you have done. Also want to thank all the staff members. I have an opportunity to meet, work with the county staff on a regular basis, and also when I was on city council, I had the opportunity to work with Candace and some other staff members. And it's very, very important, your staff is very, very important to you, not only in private industry, but also in the public life. So I want to thank y'all, too. With that being said, I would like to invite Ed Melvin to the dial. Julie, if you would please come up. Senator Clark, are there any more members of the Cumberland County delegation here today?
Representative Floyd.
Representative Floyd, I'm sorry. Would you mind, Senator Clark, John, I'm sorry, anybody from the, I apologize, I sometimes look, if y'all would come up, please. It's my honor and privilege, I get an opportunity to go around the state and do things as a representative up in the Senate, but it's my honor and privilege when I get to do something locally for somebody that means so much to the community. And on behalf of the Governor of North Carolina, I would like to present the Order of the Long Leaf Pine to Ed Melvin and thank him for his service to this state and this community. Thank you.
Well, I'm lost for words. I know this award is not totally mine, it belongs to the citizens of this county. Without all of you, I would not be here where I'm at today and would not have received this. So I'm going to thank each and every one of you. Thank you, Senator Meredith. Thank you, Governor, for the long leaf pine. Thank you.
Okay. I'm honored additionally today with being, having the honor to also present something to Commissioner King. If you'd please come up, and Margaret, if you would join him. Well, again, on behalf of the Governor of the state of North Carolina, it's my honor and my privilege to present the Order of the Long Leaf Pine to Billy King. Billy, thank you so much.
Senator, I just want to say to you and to the Governor and to the citizens here in Cumberland County, I have greatly enjoyed my experience. I recognize the significance of this recognition, and I'm very grateful for having received it, and this should be shared with all the citizens of Cumberland County. Thank you very much.
And now the next portion of the program, I will turn over to the clerk as he's the administration of the oath of office.
Commissioners elect Adams and Lancaster and Commissioners Counsel and Evans, if you will please come to the front when I call your name and also the name of the individual who will administer your oath of office. Commissioner-elect Adams and resident Superior Court Judge Gail Adams.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It is indeed a privilege and an honor for me to swear in and give the oath of office to my husband, Glenn B. Adams. Glenn, if you will place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Glenn B. Adams.
I, Glenn B. Adams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
Of Cumberland County.
Of Cumberland County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Commissioner Jeanette Counsel and District Court Judge Edward Adams.
Commissioner Counsel, it is my distinct privilege and a high honor to administer the oath to my friend, cousin, and county commissioner representative. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. I, Jeanette Counsel.
I, Jeanette Counsel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
Of Cumberland County.
Of Cumberland County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Commissioner Charles Evans and Ms. Ellen Huxbury.
I am humbled and thankful to be able to do this for an adopted son of my many sons. Oath of office. I, Charles Evans, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Charles Evans, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain the laws of the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As county commissioner of Cumberland County.
As county commissioner of Cumberland County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This is the first day of December 2014.
Commissioner-elect Larry Lancaster and senior resident Superior Court Judge James Anderson.
First of all, I want to thank the county commissioners for their support of the court system, particularly Ed and Billy going off, and I want the rest of you to know that the court system is going to come back asking for more. As a senior resident, I'm used to giving instructions, and I want to make sure that we have everything clear here. Judge Adams, my colleague, said, "A bad precedent. When I finish the oath, you shake my hand and kiss her." Left hand is on the Bible, if you raise your right, and repeat after me. I, Larry L. Lancaster.
I, Larry L. Lancaster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
Of Cumberland County.
Of Cumberland County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and God bless.
And now the next order of business is the election of officers, and the first office is the office of chairman, and I have a nomination, so I recognize me. The person that I'm going to nominate is one who has served with me also for 14 years. Kenneth Edge has served as president of the National Association. He serves also as a member of one of the mental health alliances. He is on the board now. He has served as a community, you know, mental health board here, social services board, the civic center board, the hospital board, and numerous other boards. His heart is with the citizens of the county, and I'm proud to place his name in nomination for the role of the position of chair for the coming year. Hearing no other nominations, I will entertain a motion that we accept him by acclamation. Mr. Keith?
Mr. Cooper.
All right, those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. I forgot. There's so much changing. Oh, congratulations.
You know you're ready to give up that seat. You know you're ready.
Oh, congratulations. I didn't even congratulate you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will accept nominations for the office of vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, it was a great pleasure. I'd like to make a nomination for vice chairman. I've had the honor of serving with this individual for the past six years, and have always admired his financial insight and willingness to serve Cumberland County. Although we have not always agreed on issues before the board, I believe he has always put the well-being of the citizens of Cumberland County when voting on issues. His background as a member and chair of the Board of Education and service in our other human services boards gives him a unique and insightful perspective on our ability to continue to serve the health, education, and welfare of our citizens in this county. With that being said, I would like to nominate Mr. Marshall Faircloth as the next vice chair of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners.
Any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed.
The nominations have been closed. I think that's by consensus. All those in favor of Marshall Faircloth for vice chairman, please let it know by raising your hand.
Unanimous.
Congratulations, Marshall. You get to change seats one more time.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, board. Thank you, citizens.
Well, Jeanette, or as your grandson calls you, Mama Jay. It has been an honor and a privilege for you to lead, lead this board this past year. There's been some difficult times, as you well know, and Marshall calls them scud missiles. There's always some scud missiles that we get that we are not aware of and this year we've had the, the opportunity and the great opportunity to hire a, a new county manager. We went through a national search and, and you led that effort with distinction and with honor and, and also the, the other thing that we've dealt with and we're probably still dealing with is, is chickens. But as our faithful servant Billy King said, everything's going to be all right. But I'd like to present you this plaque for the third time in grateful appreciation of your leadership as chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, December 2nd, 2013 to December the 1st, 2014. And thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Is everybody in place?
Yes. Yes.
Before we move on with the agenda, which is very short, it is customary for the incoming chairperson to make some comments. So bear with me, I'll try to be quick and, but I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for its support in electing me to be the chairperson of this, of this board for the next coming year. This honor is a great privilege and I accept it with humility. To Billy King and Ed Melvin, thank you for your dedicated service to this county. I would like to also congratulate and extend a warm welcome to Glenn Adams and Larry Lancaster on your, on your election as a member of this board. And congratulations to Jeanette Council and Charles Evans on your reelection. Jimmy, Marshall, and I look forward to our continued service together. Ladies and gentlemen, the fellow commissioners on my left and right are an extraordinary gathering of talent and leadership. Each one of you possesses a wealth of experience and abundance of talent and incredible skills that have brought you success as professional, business, and educational leaders in this county. I would also like to thank my family and friends. I would especially like to thank Brenda for her support throughout the last 20 years during my tenure as a Board of Education member and as a county commissioner. All of you up here can attest to the time and energy that one must invest in service to this county. Our family life, professional life, and personal life are frequently cast aside as we tend to the many needs of our county. All of the incumbents on this board know the importance that our clerk Candace White and our deputy clerk Kelly Bean play in our lives by the incredible support they give to our board each and every day, and we thank you. We are fortunate to have an excellent management and legal staff. Our county manager Amy Cannon has assembled a highly qualified support staff of assistant managers and department heads. Rick Morfield has wisely chosen an exceptional legal staff to offer advice and legal opinions to our board and departments. Thank you for your leadership and guidance as we make policy, policy decisions about our county. We have great confidence in your abilities. It is traditional for the incoming chairperson to offer ideas and suggest goals regarding issues that commissioners will need to address during the next 12 months. Establishing goals is a team effort and my belief is that it should be done collectively and not individually. In early 2015, commissioners, commissioners and management will have a strategic planning session to look at our mission statement, our vision statement, and establish priorities for the coming year and future years. Some will obviously be continuing goals as well as new goals. Challenges will continue and opportunities will always exist as the year progresses. Decisions must be made on what is affordable and sustainable with our revenue resources. I am asking each commissioner to commit two days for this important strategic planning session in late January or early February. We are facing tremendously challenging times as a country, as a state, and as a county. We are well positioned to move Cumberland County into a brighter future. The landscape is different this time. We have federal, military, homeless, and veteran issues that are not addressed in the strategic, in the strategic plan. Those of us who are current commissioners or reelected commissioners know that our number one priority this year is to try and find the money for a cost of living adjustment for our employees because they have continued to perform in an exceptional level, at an exceptional level for several years without a cola. We also need to be aware of the fact that there is going to be a reduction in personnel at Fort Bragg. None of us know the number. It could be 600, it could be 16,000. We've heard all kinds of numbers. Can we withstand the potential of the loss of revenue, loss of sales tax, increase in unemployment, the impacts on social services, health services, child support, and behavioral health? Perhaps we can form a partnership with Angelo and Wayne Counties as they face the same issues and challenges that we face. Another issue we will be facing this year is a sales tax agreement with the municipalities. Other issues to consider would be: reestablish quarterly meetings with the editors of the newspaper to answer any questions that they may have about any issues and to clear up any misunderstandings. Continue to establish relationships with the members of the General Assembly, congressmen, and senators to ensure that Cumberland County's interests are pursued and met. And thank you again, all of those elected officials from the General Assembly for being here and also Elaine Marshall, our secretary of state. We need to continue to meet and collaborate with the nine municipalities and the school board on issues that either party deems necessary. I encourage all commissioners to become involved in NCACC and NACO activities and conferences. This is an opportunity to learn from other counties and states. And Jeanette, thank you for the promotion. I know you didn't mean to do that, but I have never been president of NACO, I have been president of NCACC.
Uh-oh, I'm sorry. Well, you could have been.
These suggestions do not cover all initiatives and/or services that require the Board of Commissioners leadership, but are significant import, important to the citizens we serve. If we pursue our goals with a shared vision, pursue our purpose with passion, practice solid values, lead with our hearts as well as our heads, continue to establish connected relationships, and demonstrate self-discipline, we can continue to achieve success. I pledge to you that I will continue to be an advocate to make Cumberland County a better place to live, work, and rear family. With God's help, we will strengthen Cumberland County. Thank you for sharing this morning. That concludes my remarks. And with that, I would ask Ms. Cannon if there is any other items that need to be changed on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Subtle.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much for attending this morning. We hope that you will stay with us a little while longer. In the room behind us here, we're going to have a reception where you can mingle and speak with some of the people that you have been here to support this morning. And you know, I've been a commissioner for 14 years and I don't ever recall this large of a crowd being here for a swearing-in ceremony. And I appreciate you coming and thank you for being involved in Cumberland County. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
So move.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.